Standby, we're in the opening credits. Mayor, just a reminder, we're adjourning today. Next meeting will be on Friday for closed session at 8:00 a.m.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order Wednesday, June 24, 2020. Right now, 7:05 p.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
President.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Councilmember Nguyen.
That's my one and only one.
Okay, he's here.
I have bad connection or something.
Can you hear us?
We heard him.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. All right, so. We can hear you. Yeah.
We have a connection or something. Okay.
All right. Next, salute to the flat. We'll be mayor Ta and vacation will be council member Nguyen. So please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello? I have bad connection. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yeah.
What happened? Okay, somehow I have your picture still standing gray. On my screen. Does anybody have the same pictures that I have on my screen?
How is your?
That the mayor is still standing and.
He's definitely standing, but it's your connection.
All right, something wrong here.
Are you done? Thank you, councilmember Nguyen. Next, we have. Communication. We don't have any. Any report from City Club?
Yes, just two things for tonight. First off, just a reminder for everyone to make sure you complete your census. Visit 2020census.gov. Right now Westminster's self-response rate is at 73.4%, which is actually higher than the state's average of 62.8% and the national rate of 61.7%. These results are as of yesterday. So good job Westminster, but we still need to make sure that we, you know, we get as close to 100% as possible. It's the benefit of the city and for our future. The next thing that we have is that staff is requesting items number 7.1 and 5.4 be moved prior to the consent calendar since we expect that there are a lot of people tuned in for those items tonight. So it would be 5.4 first, which is the budget, and then 7.1, which is the citizens oversight committee update, which of course it requires council vote to move those items prior to the consent calendar.
So. May I have a motion to move item 5.4 and 7.1 forward? So any motion? May I have a motion to move item 5.4 and 7.1 forward?
Hey, Christine, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
I think you muted.
Yeah, we're not allowed to unmute ourselves, so.
Okay.
I second. Okay.
So who motion?
I make a motion to move 5.4. Is it 5.4?
Yes.
And 7.1 forward.
Correct. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Do we have a second?
So who second a motion?
A second.
Okay.
So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
So I'm, for some reason, it's not letting me speak. So can you take me off the mute there so I could participate?
You're unmuted.
Now I am, but I was like clicking it and it wasn't going through, but yes.
We'll check on that. And then councilmember Doe.
Yes, you know, when we, when, right now I can talk, but when I milt, I cannot unmute on my own. They say that you are not allow us to do it. That's the message we got, so.
That's, that's definitely new. Okay, we will. Well, we'll, we'll make sure to leave you all unmuted. Okay, councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah, I milton. He can't do it himself.
I can't. Where did he go? Oh, he's in, he moved himself to panel, to attendee. Hold on. Growing pains. And councilmember Nguyen is.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, it looks like.
Councilmember Nguyen. He's with us. I can't even, I can't unmute him.
Councilmember Nguyen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah. Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. So right now, we're waiting for you to, for the vote. We moved.
I can't start the video because I think that.
That's okay. So are you, are you voting gay or nay to move 5.4 and 7.1 up?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the vote for what?
So we're, we're, there was a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by councilmember Doe to move items 5.4 and 7.1 prior to the consent calendar.
Okay, and.
Everyone else is voting yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Okay, that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have oral communication.
Yes, so we received one e-comment. Received one e-comment and it was from Kate Mar, community legal aide of SoCal and basically asking that the county board supervisors asked Orange County Sheriff's Department to suspend the pending 185 evictions that were set to start June 1st with the duration of COVID-19 and initial 30 days following the termination of the state of California, the state of emergency, and that we're still in that state of emergency. Despite efforts to reopen and relax rules governing face coverings in public, the increase in cases and deaths should cause the city of Westminster pause, especially in light of those who are amid eviction and at risk of homelessness. And this is not countenance a result. And they just shared information about the organization providing critical legal services to low-income communities, but not limited to tenant counseling, eviction defense, and advocating for the rights of low-income tenants. They serve clients and communities to ensure equal access to the justice system for people who cannot otherwise afford attorneys. In previous correspondence with the board of supervisors, they explained that suspending the enforcement eviction orders is not only critical for public health, that that is within the powers of the board to do so. And that's suspending enforcement of eviction orders to ensure families do not become homeless, when they are legally required to shelter in place and reduce the risk of exposure for deputies. In Orange County, there are close to 7,000 unsheltered individuals. Basically, they urgently request that the city agrees to suspend enforcement of any and all, or they urgently request that suspension of enforcement of any and all pending eviction orders unless they're directly related to protective order. Emergency. They've provided some information and this information is available, is available on the city's website. In addition to that, we have one public speaker. And if there's anybody else who wants to, anyone else who'd like to speak, just raise your hand. First speaker is Terry Rains. Terry, is this, is this working for you?
I think so. Is it?
Yes.
I hope everybody else is there. All right, good evening. Terry Rains, Westminster. While a budget is a moment in time, it is also a living document. Closer scrutiny is needed now due to the city's finances being greatly impacted by COVID-19 and the looming sunset of major SS. I would like to share some of my comments from the citizens oversight committee meeting on June 18, 2020. In my opinion, the revised 2020-2021 budget is not conservative enough. I believe the revenue projections are still too high and expenditure cuts too low. The only real cuts are freezing six open positions, reducing part-time wages, and some contractual reductions. In my opinion, Westminster needs to make significant and doable cuts now, like most other Orange County cities are, who don't have the potential $12 to $13 million loss of annual revenue looming over their heads like we do. Without the transfer of 2.4 million from capital, project money, and another 1.9 million from reserves, the city would have had a significant deficit for 2020-2021, even with major SS revenue. The five-year general fund balances projection is bleak. Even if not a big F, major SS is renewed by the voters, every fiscal year still shows a significant deficit up to four and a half million dollars per year. If on the other hand, major SS is not renewed by the voters, the city will be completely out of money by fiscal '23-'24 and will be again facing bankruptcy. My first suggestion is that the city, at the direction of this council, immediately begin conducting extensive, extensive community outreach, educating the public about the need to renew major SS and aim toward putting the major on this year's November ballot because more people will be voting due to it being a presidential election. The survey was a good start. The impact of the governor's one-year sales tax deferral to assist small businesses could mean over $2 million in lost sales tax revenue to the city well into fiscal year 2021. Staff chose not to include any projected revenue loss for the budget, in the budget for this, assuming the city would be made whole at the end of the fiscal year. I don't agree. How many small businesses will fail between now and then, or default on their sales tax payment plans? So my second suggestion is to reduce the 2020-2021 general sales tax budget by 100,000, which is 5% of that 2 million. Next, the major SS transaction tax revenue was not reduced proportionately to the reduction made to the general sales tax revenue in the budget. My third suggestion is to reduce the major SS transaction tax revenue by another 500,000 to better align with reductions made to the general sales tax revenue budget. My fourth suggestion is to reduce the property tax revenue budget by at least 500,000. The economy has taken a huge hit due to COVID-19. Jobs have been lost, household incomes drastically reduced, and businesses are struggling just to survive. The property tax revenue budget was actually increased and no allowances were made for certain increases in residential and business foreclosures and taxi-faulted properties due to COVID-19 impacts. Mortgage defaults are projected to be as high as 30% in the coming year. My fifth suggestion is for the city to revert to an annual budget cycle instead of a biannual one. The two-year cycle extends the sitting, sitting council's fiscal control too far into the future, impeding future council's ability to govern. The perceived savings and staff labor is quickly offset by the need to constantly review and revise a two-year budget. And my opinion does not have the same level of scrutiny than the annual budget does. It is better to err on the side of caution. It is much easier to adjust the budget positively upwards in three months if actual trends warrant it than to frantically search for downward adjustments at that time. You may wonder why I have such a keen interest in the city's finances. My finance-related background includes 25 years in corporate finance management in the private sector with special emphasis on budgeting, financial reporting and analysis, long-term forecasting, and what-if modeling. I also spent almost 10 years as a fiscal watchdog in another Orange County city. I constantly poured over the city's capers, budgets, warrants, registers, and other financial reports in tremendous detail and was involved in the city's financial oversight and audit committees, as well as a prominent resident watchdog group. I hope the scope of the citizens oversight committee can be expanded to further assist the city going forward with major SS and with oversight of the city's finances in general. I look forward to hearing the presentation and recommendations from the chair of that committee, Diana Carey, later tonight. Due to my time limit, I will share my proposal to council about term limits on the November ballot at the next city council meeting. And I certainly hope, and I know many others do, that we can start, we can resume having meetings in person very soon. Thank you.
Speaker, do we have any other speaker?
Next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jody Boyd from Westminster. I would like to thank the mayor, the city council, our interim city manager, and her staff. I'd like to thank all of you for a job well done so far as we navigate through the choppy waters of COVID-19. I know that it is like navigating blind, and I particularly want to thank you for putting in place and keeping in place the authority wearing a mask. You were ahead of the board advisors and the mayor and governor on that. And I really do appreciate that. Second, regarding major SS and any increases to sales tax, one thing that we all need to keep in mind is, the other big thing we're up against is that our governor has basically put a moratorium that small businesses that have less than, I believe it's $50,000 in sales tax to submit, they basically have up to one year before they have to submit that money so they can continue to collect it and even use it until the time period ends. So increasing our sales taxes is something in the long term, but it's not going to be a short-term fix. I think that we also, since Westminster, I believe in a previous meeting Christians said that 80% small businesses. We really need to get ahead of that and focus on the roughly 20% of businesses that are not small businesses and do everything we can to help them attract business and stay in business because they're gonna, they're gonna be a real tax revenue until we're out of this. Lastly, Christine, would you mind repeating the name of the organization and telephone number and contact person? The lady who submitted an e-comment, I think that that organization and the contact number should be written down by everybody because it can help individuals to avoid eviction, especially unlawful eviction. So if you would do that, I would appreciate it. And again, thank you, everybody, from the bottom of my heart.
So just to, just to repeat what that, that group is Community Legal Aid of SoCal and it's www.communitylegalsocal.org. Again, communitylegalsocal.org. And that information will be part of the record. That's all I have for public speakers tonight.
Thank you so much. So next, we have item 5.4. Westminster City Council Housing Authority and Public Financing Authority. We have budget and appropriation of fund for fiscal year 2021. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Ho, and council members. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you our fiscal year 1920-21 budget. While it's not the budget we hope to present, it is one that will continue to evolve as more data presents itself. With the impact of COVID-19, there's a lot of unknown to this day. This budget begins with freezing some positions and reduces, reducing some contracts and services. And three months will be better prepared to address trending revenues and expenditures. And staff will be happy to address any questions after our brief presentation.
Let's hope, hold on, hold on, timeout. Hold on, timeout, 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 timeout. Can you hear it? You need to turn on the broadcast or.
This is the same budget that was presented at the 1920 study session with a few updates to special revenue accounts. The financial impacts of COVID-19 are still unknown, so this budget is a starting point that we will continue to review and will provide council with quarterly updates throughout the year. COVID-19 has caused a global economic crisis, which has had a profound impact on the city of Westminster. Business closures, job losses, and stay-at-home orders have reduced revenue and increased costs to the city. Fiscal year 1920 started up strong with a reduction of the cost recovery schedule and the third year of voter approved of local trend-up news packs.
What for?
Departments have controlled spending and reduced contractual costs. Despite these savings and local funds, fiscal year 1920 is projected to end with a $1 million deficit. In February, we were anticipating a positive ending fiscal year 1920 change in fund balance with requests for additional funding going towards streets, parks, pensions, and community development. However, with COVID-19, reductions are inevitable and advised budget as presented includes cuts, transfers from capital projects, and a use of reserves. This is a very different budget than what we were trying to imply with COVID-19. Vacant positions are frozen and savings are included in the projected budget. It does not include layoffs or possible living increases. Includes revenue projections that are fluid with the true impact unknown and changing daily. Expenditures could potentially need additional projections in the future. Currently, over 75% of Westminster's budget is spent on public safety, including emergency response and disaster preparedness services. The impact of COVID-19 pandemic has currently reduced overall revenue projections by 4.7 million both fiscal year 2021, affecting most revenue sources. The sales tax budget was reduced from 17.4 million to 15.3 million, and the transaction tax budget was reduced from 12.9 million to 11.9 million. General fund revenues are budgeted at 62.6 million. The majority of the income is from taxes at 83%, followed by charges for services at 7% and investment in rental at 2.3%. The budget also includes a one-time transfer in from capital projects for 2.4 million or 3.9%. Taxes make up 83% of general fund revenue. Something to note about this revenue source is that any changes must be placed on a ballot and approved by the residents. This is also the revenue source that is subject to state manipulation or deferral as shown with the current sales tax assistance given to small businesses. The impact of this deferral is unknown, but could potentially be because most of the money should be received by the end of the fiscal year. The recommended budget includes six frozen positions that are currently vacant. This list will be reviewed again with the first quarterly budget update. The budget also includes reduced part-time wages and contractual spending in several departments and reduced special events. It includes a transfer in from capital projects of 2.4 million. As you recall, last year we transferred 3 million surplus to a capital project to be determined at a later date. Earlier this year, council allocated 565,000 to the Boys and Girls Club renovation, leaving 2.4 million available. We are recommending the balance be transferred back to the general fund to offset some of the COVID-19-related losses. The budget also includes some increases for programs and services approved during the current year, but not reflected in the adopted fiscal year 2021 budget approved in May of 2019. Adjustments to legal and utilities are included based on current year trends. The general fund expenditures and transfers out are budgeted at 64.5 million. The majority of the costs are related to public safety, both police at 33.2 million or 52% and fire at 15.8 million or 25%. These are called the public works at 5.3 million or 8%. The fiscal year 2021 budget is showing an ending general fund balance of 2.3.
No, because then it's gonna echo.
Was 1 million after a use of 1.9 million reserves to balance the budget. Of this amount, 9.4 million or 41% is unrestricted. Another 11 million or 47% is set aside for emergency reserve. And the remaining 2.7 million or 12% is set aside for any potential RDA dislocation drawbacks. These reserves are set per our fund balance policy. Our capers rates are based on the interest rate assumption of 7%. If that rate doesn't happen, the impact is reflected in increased future rates. Likewise, if they earn more than 7%, we can reduce. The impact on helpers and desktop returns from the general funders should be known by the first quarter review. Possible impacts can be seen in this chart. The blue line shows pension costs for the next ten years using the seven percent return. Current recommendations are to look at the costs at zero, negative five and negative ten percent return. The COVID-related impact starts to increase in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on all three scenarios. In year ten, there's almost a six-million-dollar increase from the seven percent assumed rate to the negative ten percent worst-case scenario. The water fund is the city's next largest fund and receives most of the budgeted seventeen-point-six million revenue from charges for services. A majority of the fifteen-point-eight million expenditures are in pump and basin assessment, salaries and benefits and purchased water. The city's ability to pump a hundred percent of our demand has resulted in nine-hundred-thousand-dollar savings in water purchase costs for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. This is a summary of the seven-point-six million capital projects recommended for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. All of these projects are funded with grants, special revenue accounts and water funds. Three-point-four million of infrastructure repairs and two-point-seven million in car improvements are the largest allocations. All internal service funds have a minimum of five-hundred-thousand in unrestricted fund balance with the exception of the Risk Management and Workers' Compensation Benefits Fund. We can transfer excess fund balance to the general fund at some point if necessary. As you know, Measure SS was passed in two thousand and sixteen by Westminster voters and is currently slated to expire in December of two thousand and twenty-two. It is budgeted at eleven-point-nine million in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four projects a seventeen-point-two million-dollar deficit. Solving for the loss of Measure SS and the deficit would take cuts of seventeen million to have a balanced budget in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This is just a quick look at the general fund's budget projection using the most recent trends. Something to note is that while we are conservative in our estimates, the economy is a huge unknown. There's no way to know the depth of the COVID impact. This chart shows what the budget would look like with Measure SS ending December twenty-two. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three contains only a half-year of the expiring transaction camps and we are completely out of money in fiscal year twenty-four. Even with the continuation of Measure SS, the city will have to look for ways to increase revenue and cut expenditures to maintain a balanced budget. In light of what is currently going on in the world and to show our community that we have many social programs in our budget in various departments, we would like to point them out. I'm not going to read all of these, but wanted to point out there are many community programs funded throughout the budget, not just in the general fund, which is usually the focus of budget presentations. These are some of the police department activities that support our community. The City Coach Department also includes communications. Community Development, Finance and Public Works. Community Services and the Senior Center. Special Revenue Funds provide community support with the Gamma Resource Center, Senior Transportation, CBG and all. Community-based capital projects. Other funds like Economic Development and Water include programs as well. Again, this is an updated budget that was previously approved last year. Other than changes that were approved during fiscal year nineteen-twenty and revised estimates, there are no supplemental requests other than capital projects added. Staff will continue to monitor revenues and expenses monthly and provide council with quarterly updates.
Thank you. I apologize for that. It's kind of hard to hear with the muffled sound and all, but that presentation is available. It will be available on our website for those that want to listen to it again. Again, I do apologize, but this time if there's any questions, you'd be willing to answer.
I really want to thanks the city manager and acting finance director for the presentation and for the staff report. I really appreciate that. I think the presentation is really easy to follow and I believe that all members of City Council, when we look at a number, we understand that our staff, they work really hard to come up with, you know, all the number and explain our financial circumstance. So I really, really thank you so much for your presentation. So now, any, any question from any council member?
I want to start with the comment by good mayor. I agree with Mayor Ta that having Sherry here, Service of Finance Director and now City Manager, I think she has a great bird's eye view and also in the weeds view of our budget. And I think there, knowing that this is not going to be a stagnant document, that we're going to be revising it periodically, once we get a better understanding of how COVID is going to impact our community in terms of financing. You know, I think considering what we have to work with, I think this budget is something I can support. Again, the fact that we're, that we're holding vacant positions and the fact that we're doing everything we can to protect services, again, our job here is to provide services for our community. And, you know, when we lose a staff member or we lay off, we have, we have a loss in services. And I think during this pandemic, we've learned the value of our public services and has really elevated the need for a lot of the work that we're doing in the community. And so I want to again, thank City Manager Johnson and her team for her leadership to go on, going through this budget. I know you spent an enormous amount of time, you talked to all of us and went over details. Yeah, I want to point out specifically in terms of some of the, the impact, but really, I think the fact that we're, again, leaving vacant positions open, we're not, we're freezing, you know, wage increases, I think it's responsible. I think we're doing the best we can and I think, once we get a better idea of what the future holds for us, hopefully the federal government will help us with some additional cares funding to help close some gaps. I think this is the best we have to work with and I think it's fair. And again, I want to thank City Manager and her team for the sleepless nights. I'm sure Aaron Backs had her share of thinking over this budget carefully and again, all of you, I really want to commend you all for your time and effort. I think it's a very fair budget, so I definitely appreciate it and look forward to supporting you.
So thank you, council member Contreras. Any, any questions or concerns from a member of the council? If not, I'd like to approve as recommended. I think this budget is reasonable, I think, and does fair for everyone. I mean that we, we got impact from COVID-19 and we have to, we have to face a few vacant positions, but at the end of the day, we survive and I think that this budget will help our city to overcome this pandemic. So I move as recommended. So may I have a second? Well, I don't have a second.
A second?
Hey.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second to approve the budget. See you, club.
And that second was council member Doe?
Yes.
Okay. So that was moved by Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Doe. And it's to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, adopting and appropriating the budget for the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, establishing the Article thirteen B appropriation limit for the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Westminster Public Financing Authority, adopting and appropriating the budget for the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Westminster Housing Authority, adopting and appropriating the budget for the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, adopting the fund balance policy and approve various cleanup budget items for fiscal year twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty. The mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Okay, I wanted to reiterate that I am supporting this budget because I know it's not a stagnant document. I know we're going to be looking at it periodically and revising it as long the way, so it's an I.
Okay. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nguyen, can you hear us? I think he couldn't hear us. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you, City Council. Next item, seven-point-one Citizen Oversight Committee update regarding Measure SS. I'd like to invite Ms. Ann Marie Carey.
Good evening, Mayor Ta and council. I am really pleased to be able to give you the findings from our recent meeting. We are happy to report that the local funding has been spent in accordance with the community's priorities, including preventing cuts to nine-one-one response and the number of paramedics and firefighters, preventing city bankruptcy, fighting gangs and drugs and preventing the elimination of the police narcotics, domestic violence, sex crimes and human trafficking units and the addition of an SRO, repairing our streets and potholes, code enforcement and the Community Preservation Unit, promoting programs that attract businesses and create jobs. Financially, other items with the local funds, Westminster was able to reverse years of deep cuts to vital programs, including public safety and economic development. Those funds have also been spent as promised. We want to commend the city for setting up Project Westminster Online Portal, which has been an invaluable tool for our community members so that they may see upcoming city improvement projects for businesses and to connect to the city for residents to provide input and more recently, and very importantly, a one-stop information center for the city's coronavirus response. Westminster is grappling with the health and fiscal, excuse me, impacts of the coronavirus. Now more than ever, our residents are relying on critical services the city provides, including nine-one-one emergency response and emergency medical services. However, we point out that the local monies which help fund these services are set to expire soon. As we begin to confront the economic impacts, impacts of this crisis, Westminster must have the capacity to support our local economy or the city will once again be forced to make deep cuts to basic vital services, including recovery and reinvestment support for our local economy. Local tax dollars are being used right now to support our local businesses and I encourage any local small business to go to Project Westminster Local Business Portal right now so that you may see the services that are available to you. As we saw in the budget presentation, should local funding from Measure SS be allowed to expire, the city's long-term systemic budget problems will grow exponentially and very quickly. The city will face similar dire choices to maintain the services that our residents value. The committee asked me to reiterate that we will not be able to cut around the edges given the size of the seventeen-million-dollar projected shortfall should the local funding expire. Once again, we must be self-sufficient in identifying local funds needed to maintain services or begin planning for drastic cuts that the lack of funding will require. We are very encouraged by the result of the recent Emergency Relief and Recovery Survey that clearly identified that our community does not want cuts to services and is in favor of reauthorization of the measure. The city needs time to prepare, prepare for its next economic steps. As we did in two thousand and sixteen, you must allow the community to once again decide its own future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey, for your report and I want to thank all the members of your committee. Really want to appreciate and thankful for your dedication and service to the Westminster community. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Thank you to the Citizens Oversight Committee and Budget Staff for their presentations. In addition to the critical work of our Citizens Oversight Committee, over the last several months, the city has been engaging with Westminster residents on their local service priorities. We want to thank the hundreds of residents who provided input, input to date, so far maintaining nine-one-one response times, the number of paramedics and firefighters, preventing city bankruptcy and maintaining Westminster's fiscal health and stability, preparing for emergencies, repairing streets and roads, helping local residents and businesses recover by promoting and attracting local businesses and jobs remain top of the mind issues for our residents. Our outreach is critical during this time and is still ongoing. Those at home who wish to provide input can visit us at Project W Westminster site and provide input today. I will be bringing this item back for more in-depth consideration at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Once again, thank Ms. Carey for your service. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
I move to receive and file.
All right, so we have the motion to receive and file.
Yes, motion made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by councilmember Contreras. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to receive and file the report.
Thank you. Next, we have consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless members of City Council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and second to approve this consent calendar.
Motion carried by councilmember Contreras, seconded by councilmember Nguyen to move the consent calendar. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next, we have public hearings.
Really briefly, anyone looking to speak on a public hearing item will have five minutes to speak. We didn't receive any ecomments. Speak when public hearing is open, just raise your hand in the queue.
Item four point one, update to the City Westminster Traffic Impact Analysis Guideline and Senate Bill seven-four-three implementation. May I have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Traffic impacts are an important part of any analysis for a development project, and for that, the Community Development Department really relies on our traffic engineering and Adolfo Zeta in particular to assist us with that. So I'm going to turn this over to him. He's been instrumental in creating this program to get us up to the new state guidelines for traffic analysis.
Thank you, Alexa. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Christine, I'd like to pull up a presentation.
Let me bring up broadcast. One moment. Okay.
Okay, do you see the cover page right now?
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. Thank you again. I'm going to make a presentation tonight on Senate Bill seven forty-three implementation and really, as well as traffic impact analysis guidelines. Every time Senate bills, assembly bills are pushed down to the local government sectors, we at the city of Westminster, particularly under the direction of our interim city manager and working with other department heads, we have been very good about implementing measures that meet the Senate bill or Assembly bill guidelines, but also take a really hard look at how we conduct business at the city and look at these as opportunities to really enhance the experience for our developers, for residents, and for businesses in the city. So although I will be focusing on Senate Bill seven forty-three and the implementation, I will talk a little bit more about how we are revising, we handle the transportation process within the city, working very closely with Alexa and Steve and Community Development. We've been able to streamline the process to make the experience for business owners who are trying to develop in our city more pleasurable and more expedited. So I'll go ahead and a little bit about me. Currently, I'm the interim assistant to the city manager, as well as your transportation manager. I function as the city traffic engineer, and I've been here for fifteen years. I'm a state-licensed civil engineer, as well as a state-licensed traffic engineer. And I mention that because traffic engineering is one of those disciplines that is very, very important to be able to master, to really get the most out of the policy that is being adopted at the local level. Many, many times, the policy directives from Sacramento seem overwhelming, like another layer of bureaucracy perhaps to many people. But you know, we at the city were very good. We're a good mix of employees that have had a great deal of private sector experience in many cases, such as myself. And having that experience and having the understanding is we're able to meet the expectations of the state and also implement measures that are beneficial to the city. So I'm going to go ahead and get started a little bit more on what we're here to discuss tonight. Really, on your agenda, we're asking that you recommend, we're asking, we recommend the approval of SB seven forty-three. SB seven forty-three essentially changes the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines for the state, and we are expected to implement SB seven forty-three within our procedures in the city of Westminster by July of 2020. I'll talk a little bit more about that. The other portion of it really is an opportunity to enhance the way that we do business at the city. We have an implementation strategy that was developed as part of the general plan update, and this implementation strategy is what I will be discussing in item two, which is an update to the Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines. I'll start off with the first item, which is the purpose and content of SB seven forty-three. SB seven forty-three changes, SB seven forty-three changes the way that CEQA guidelines are presented, particularly when identifying a transportation impact. So every time there's a project that gets to the council level, many times when I present to the Planning Commission, traffic and transportation is one of the most important items that is discussed by the public, and we get the most questions from our Planning Commission, as well as our councils, as well as our traffic commissioners, about how is this project going to affect transportation, mobility within the city. So SB seven forty-three changes some things. It makes people a little bit uncomfortable, but I think that we, I'm going to present to you a policy implementation measure that allows us to have kind of the best of both worlds, where we meet the expectations from the state, but we also maintain a mobility system in the city that meets the expectations of the public and based a lot on our general plan update and the expectations that were identified through that multi-year process. The evolution of CEQA, essentially. I mean, all of these are assembly bills. I won't go through all of them. You see that in highlighted, SB seven forty-three is the one we're discussing. It's at the very bottom there. SB ninety-seven and SB seven forty-three are essentially the same. The problem with SB ninety-seven is that it didn't have an implementation strategy, so it just, it just sat there for a long time, and local governments did not really take to it. So SB seven forty-three essentially provided a timeline by which cities had to implement these expectations per CEQA. This is a present, this is a slide will give you an idea of how long it takes for policy to be implemented at the local level. So SB seven forty-three was signed by the governor in 2013, and between 2013 and 2018, the Office of Planning and Research, working with SCAG, Orange County, PA, local agencies developed a policy set of rules. And that set of rules was further ratified by the Natural Resources Agency in 2018. And here we are, ahead of the July 2020 opt-in period to adopt this implementation. There was an expectation that because of COVID, that this July timeline would be extended, and it was not. So with, with us working, with many people working from home and agencies such as OCTA essentially closing their doors to the public, some key presentations that needed to happen in February and March had to get pushed out into April and May. And essentially, we were able to still attend and be a part of those stakeholder groups, but then, and still are on pace to opt in for SB seven forty-three by July of 2020, ahead of July of 2020. The legislative intent for SB seven forty-three really is the reduction of greenhouse emissions, more apparently to balance the needs of congestion management and statewide goals of promoting public health through active transportation. I'll talk a little bit more about that. My presentation is slight intensive, but what is SB seven forty-three trying to change? Essentially, CEQA will no longer identify traffic impacts utilizing the traditional level of service analysis. And we've talked about that all the time. I mean, I think the most common question I get from council is, well, what's the level of service at that intersection? How is it operating? Under CEQA, that will no longer be the metric by which we identify an impact as it pertains to transportation. VMT, vehicle miles traveled, is the new metric per CEQA. We'll talk a little bit more. The illustration here to the right identifies, it's an aerial photo of a narrow intersection, and the shaded area, many times on a large-scale project, is identifies the amount of widening and the amount of additional lanes that you would have to implement in order to satisfy the traffic conditions of the area based on this new implemented project. Keep in mind that SB seven forty-three was written as a one-size-fits-all for the entire state. And in Orange County, we have very built-out roads. We have a built-out environment, particularly in Westminster. So a lot of the, a lot of the focus of SB seven forty-three really isn't for communities like us, per se. It's more for very built-out downtown areas that are essentially turning away residential development in some cases because of the level of service impact. So by relaxing the level of service impact, it is facilitating that infill development. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. This is just a reminder of what the level of service analysis means. This is a traffic engineer's rule analysis metric for presenting to the public or to interesting, interested parties, the operational conditions of an intersection. So rather than talking about thousands of vehicles on an intersection, we talk about these intersections resulting in an average delay, and that average delay is associated with the grade. Level service A, it's a pretty light traffic, middle-of-the-night type of a condition. Level service F would be, you know, downtown LA on the night of a Laker game, right? Very, very impacted, so that that's the A-through-F metric. And again, when a, when an environmental impact report is now being crafted as part of a project analysis, these levels of service are not going to define an impact. That is a big change in California. So the new metric is vehicle miles traveled, so VMT, vehicle miles traveled. Essentially, it is an extremely calculated, an extremely complicated method of calculating the sum of number of miles traveled by vehicles, right? So kind of a tough, tough concept to wrap your head around, but it can be calculated for a project area. It can be calculated for traffic analysis zones, and it can be calculated on a citywide level. I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slides. When I say very intensive, what, the VMT metric is going to require cities to implement use of a regional transportation model. Most of our traffic analysis happens, we get a third-party traffic engineer will develop a study, present it to me. I review it, I provide comments and return it. And that study is, in many cases, a focused transportation model that can be put together using your normal computer software and, of course, engineering knowledge in the field of transportation. The VMT metric will require accessing regional data, which is very complicated. Now we're talking about a more complicated computer system. What I'm getting at is not your everyday traffic consultants will no longer be able to perform VMT analysis. It's a lot more complicated. Here's a snapshot of the Southern California Association of Governments region, ranging all the way from Ventura County down to San Diego, with the exception of San Diego County, but down to the border. This is an example, this is an image of the, of the Orange County Transportation Analysis Model, OCTAM. So this is, you see the area in orange there where it says Orange County. The regional model is refined to the county level, and then we then go ahead and work with OCTA to refine that model to the local level. So here in purple or pink is the Westminster Traffic Analysis Zones that pertain to the city of Westminster. So one of the things that we do now is when we're faced with this, with this methodology, if you don't know how to apply the methodology, you don't understand the methodology, you can be burdening developers and burdening the city staff with additional analysis that is not necessarily required. So understanding those guidelines is very important. I've been a part of the development of the guidelines since 2013. It's part of what we do in our field, and we work together with OCTA and SCAG to really understand the metrics and to be able to craft a threshold and methodology that minimizes the amount of unnecessary analysis. So keep in mind that if you are redeveloping, you know, a neighborhood, you have a bunch of homes that are being redeveloped, you're more than likely not going to require a VMT analysis. If you are adding in addition to your house, it will not trigger a VMT analysis. The VMT analysis are really focused on cities that have large areas, large opportunities to develop large projects, and the state is focusing on those projects so that those projects can potentially be mixed-use, can potentially bring other types of infill development that promote a reduction in vehicle miles traveled. So a lot of the regional congestion in the Southern California region has to do with people working in the big city, for example, and then driving an hour and a half to get home and living in the suburbs. So it's intended to bring some housing into the big city and kind of balance out those needs. But again, going back to us understanding the metric, we were able to comply with SB seven forty-three and focus on certain things. So projects that generate less than one hundred and ten daily trips, we have identified as you can exempt those from a VMT analysis. Local serving retail, less than fifty thousand square feet. Most of our lots in Westminster, I think, would support projects less than fifty thousand square feet, so all of those projects would be exempt from additional analysis. Local serving projects like schools and daycares also would be exempt. And here's a really neat thing, is that because we are, we are a self-help county with our Measure M initiative and our transportation tax, we have a very robust network. We also have a very, very complete transit system through OCTA, and that transit system allows us to essentially screen, and the term screening is what's going to, I want you to focus on. By screening, it means those areas of the city do not have to perform a VMT analysis, regardless of the size of the project. They're essentially exempt. So screening equals exempt, and a lot of the city, through this carefully crafted metric, will ultimately be exempt, and I'd like to show you a little bit more than that. The transit priority areas in the city, you know, Westminster has two lines. One of them is a Bravo Rapid Line. Beach Boulevard has a Rapid Line. We have one on Bolsa. So what it does is it, it creates an area where there is high transit priority areas. And as you can see, those, those areas touch most of the city. So most of these areas you see in yellow would be exempt from a VMT analysis. The other thing we did is we, we worked with OCTA to identify what the VMT for the, for the county is. So what is the county average? So the goal of SB seven forty-three is to get us fifteen percent below the county average. That is, that is the threshold that we are adopting, very similar threshold to what everybody in the county that is, that is complying with SB seven forty-three is doing. If you look at here, the area in blue on the east side of town, multifamily, high transit use, commercial, some mixed-use, those areas are already less than fifteen percent than the county average. So those areas are already exempt. What I'll focus on is the next slide. So these areas shown here in purple, I think we'll call that, in purple, identify the areas that would be candidates for a vehicle miles traveled analysis. And essentially, I'll talk a little bit more about the methodology that goes into that study. We've crafted an analysis policy through our traffic impact guidelines that is pretty low cost, and again, would only really apply to large-scale projects that are occurring within these purple areas. As you can see, if anybody in these purple areas are essentially going to completely rebuild their homes, they're completely exempt of a VMT analysis. However, if there is a large-scale housing potential project, you would have to go through the, through the VMT analysis and identify impacts or potential impacts through that methodology. So what, how do we comply with SB seven forty-three, right? So we adopted the thresholds. We talked about the fifteen percent below. And then we essentially put together a metric and a guideline, and we've done that. It's included in the Traffic Impact Study Guidelines that I'll talk about next. So what we do is we calculate the vehicle miles traveled by a project, by the proposed project, and we also identify what the vehicle miles traveled are in the city for that particular moment. Next, we compare the project VMT with the county average. And if that project has accomplished a reduction in the VMT for that project location, then we check the box, we're compliant with SB seven forty-three. And we also look at whether that project is reducing the vehicle miles traveled for, for the city. We also check that box. We document it as part of CEQA, and then if needed, we mitigate the project. So I feel very confident with the, with the guidelines that we put together. They comply with what the state has adopted, what SCAG has ratified and what OCTA has ratified. But again, our ability to craft the methodology that is specific to Westminster, I think, is the greatest benefit to the city. So I did want to talk a little bit about the adoption of Traffic Impact Study Guidelines. I wrote these impact analysis guidelines in 2005 when I joined the city, and we've been revising them every year. We comply with OCTA expectations for traffic impact analysis. And it may, it may seem a little bit strange that I'm now talking about traffic impact analysis considering the fact that I just said that level of service is going to go away. This is where it gets a little bit confusing. Per CEQA, in the CEQA process, when you're going through the CEQA process, you need to analyze impacts from transportation based on VMT. However, that does not mean the traffic impact analyses go away. This is the biggest misconception, I think, of SB seven forty-three, that we're going to lose control about, of the congestion levels in our city that we've worked so hard to achieve over the last fifty years. Our Westminster general plan is still a policy document in the city that is, that is respected and recognized by the state. And identified in the general plan is an expectation for the way our circulation system must operate. So just because the VMT threshold is the metric under CEQA, that does not mean that that same project does not need to meet the expectations of the general plan. So that's where we balance meeting the state mandate, but also maintaining that local control to be able to say this project does not suit. to be able to say this project does not suit the general plan mobility element, the land uses, uh, by, by assessing the land use. And, and we can essentially um, work on crafting a project ultimately that satisfies S B seven forty-three, but does not result in a detriment to our mobility network. We're gonna talk, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about impact analysis. Like I said, um, one of the key emphasis is that, 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 that Sherry Johnson has brought uh, in her new position is that she wants us to look at all of these as op, ways of opportunities to enhance what we do, to make it more efficient. And um, to understand if it, if it, if it doesn't need to be as complicated as it is, then move in the direction of making it less complicated, very logical approach. Um, and that's what we're doing anytime that there is an opportunity to do so. So currently, under the general plan and under our traffic impact analysis, if a vehicle, if, excuse me, if a project, proposed project is going to generate more than five hundred daily trips or more than forty peak hour trips, then it triggers the need for a traffic analysis. Um, and um, one of the things that I've found over, over the many years of working here and reviewing the, the project and, and really working on the, the general plan and, and crafting the mobility element uh, as part of the general plan update process is that um, the threshold for triggering additional analysis is, is been too low. Um, most, uh, most projects, I would say, that, that come in around five hundred daily trips or forty peak hour trips, we end up triggering and resulting in a, the, the production of a traffic study by the developer, which does cost money and takes time. And I would have to say that most of the time, those im, uh, there is no impacts associated with projects that are hovering around the five hundred daily trips, forty hour, forty peak hour trips. Um, so one of the things that I did is I'm working with our consultant as also, and also understanding the circulation system of the city. We feel very comfortable with the criteria that is seven hundred and fifty trips uh, before a traffic impact study is, is triggered. Um, I think um, one of the things I can't, I meant, one of the many things that came out of the mobility element is our ability to understand that in many cases, we've done a, we've done a very, very good job of building out the city's street system. Um, our traffic signals operate very efficiently. Um, if you've driven other parts of the county, not so much, right? So I'm very proud of what we've done over the years. And for that reason, this, this increase from five hundred to seven fifty and from forty to fifty is going to put us in a much better position. Um, we're gonna, uh, the biggest benefit is improving the development review process from a, um, it's gonna cost the developer less money to develop and also it's gonna expedite the process. And that's something that we're working very closely with Alexa and her team. Um, we're also, what this will also do is reduce the number of project proposals that require a traffic impact analysis. And I think I mentioned that already. So as we, as we get near the end of the presentation here, I also wanted to talk about another thing that we'll be bringing back to, which would be the establishment of an on-call consultant services. Since we're gonna be a lot more specific and careful in determining who needs a traffic impact analysis. And because there might be a need for a V M T analysis, which I explained earlier, is a very complicated analysis. And I used to do these analysis when I was a consultant. And this is as complicated as it gets from a transportation planning perspective. Um, we are going to um, enhance the way that we do our in-house review. So I'm gonna work directly with Alexa and Steve and the planners. And then we're going to empower our in, in-house staff to be able to make determinations at the counter using some tools that I've put in place so that they can make an immediate and prompt response to a developer, whether they need a traffic impact analysis or whether they need a V M T analysis or whether they need both. Uh, we're gonna, by reducing the metric, there's gonna be less of them. But also by um, empowering our staff to be able to make that determination at the counter, it's gonna save time in the long run for the project. And again, the goal here would be, again, the benefit is to expedite the development review process. And what, what the on-call consultant list would do is um, we would have a list of multiple consultants and we would pair up a project with the appropriate consultant. This, this is one of the huge, one of the most um, time-consuming and I think frustrating portions of the development review process as it pertains to transportation planning is when a project is not paired with the appropriate uh, third-party consultant. And, and that is what we're gonna be attempting to do with the on-call list. We're gonna get consultants that can handle the, 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 the scope of work. And also, in all fairness to the developer, we're, we're going to get several bids um, each time we create a scope of work. And the beauty of that is that once you present that study to the city, it is going to be a first draft, but very likely be a final draft uh, rather than a back and forth situation that creates frustration and, and delays, delays the overall product. So again, staff's recommendation tonight is for the approval of the updated traffic impact analysis guidelines and also the approval of the V M T thresholds for CEQA compliance per S B seven forty-three. And good presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yeah, I'd also really wanna thank you for your presentation and I have to tell you the truth honestly, that this is really a technical item. But I'd like to ask you that, uh, as a city, we have to comply with the state guideline and we have to, of course, we have, uh, we need to uh, uh, give all the update. Uh, we need to update to our city with all the traffic impact analysis. Uh, but after we approve this item tonight, do we need any additional study for our, 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 uh, traffic impact analysis?
Uh, that's a very good question, Mayor. Um, so what we have done is we've created essentially a rulebook, which is what the traffic impact analysis is. And what we are able to do now is through our planning department, we're going to be able to hand that document to a developer that will work with the planner at the counter. And then, um, then at that point, we make the determination of a study is needed for that specific project. So essentially what we did is we created a rule that applies for the whole city. And now any developer that comes to the counter will have a policy document that guides him uh, one step at a time through the process uh, so that it makes his experience developing his project more efficient and more, uh, uh, and also a more, um, for him to actually save some money as well in the process.
I appreciate that. Alright, so uh, council member?
Yeah.
Any question? Yes, please. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just, I'd like to make a move to approve to adopt.
No, no, we have to open, we have to open a public hearing class.
Oh, alright, okay.
I'd like to make a comment or?
Actually, I first have a question.
Yeah.
Let me back up. First, I'll make a comment. Thanks again for taking the time to put together this extremely detailed presentation. Clearly, you've done your homework. I appreciate that. And from what I, from what I'm hearing is this is gonna make this process to develop our city a little easier when it comes to housing projects. Uh, my question is, in regards to the daily trips, you mentioned seven fifty before, before we had that trigger. Um, how are we gonna measure that? Is there, are we gonna put a, how is that even measured? I mean, how do we know seven hundred and fifty trips is when we need to go?
That, that's a very good question. See, and, and that's part of the problem is that in the past, when we met somebody at the counter and, and perhaps they didn't understand the rules, they would, they would try to be proactive and then hire in many cases, the wrong professional. They'd hire, and sometimes an architect. Architects are great, but they're not traffic engineers. They'd hire a civil engineer. I'm a civil engineer, but you need that extra discipline of trans, traffic engineering. So what we're gonna try to do when we engage with the developers, we're gonna let them know that they need to hire the appropriate consultant to run a trip generation analysis so that we can have a third-party assessment that is accurate and that doesn't require this back and forth debate between myself and, in many cases, other experts that are not truly experts in the field. So that is the first step is for us to say, you know what, your project, well, let me take a step back, actually. What, by empowering our planners at the counter, our planners will be able to enter the characteristics of the project into a spreadsheet that I've created. And it's gonna give them an immediate number that they could compare it to. So if you put in, let's just say forty thousand square feet of medical, it's gonna come back with a thousand daily trips. And at the counter, they'll be able to tell the consultant, the developer, here's what's in store for you. You're gonna have to do this type of analysis. We're gonna pair you up with this consultant. And then at that point, everything starts moving in the right direction. Rather than us getting multiple assessments of the same project and then me having to butt heads with everybody in trying to straighten out the, the misunderstanding. So there is a technical way of calculating that number. Sorry for the long answer.
So, so, so less trips to City Hall is what I'm hearing.
Less trips to City Hall, uh, hopefully less phone calls to you guys. Less phone calls to Alexa, right? So it is a streamlined process. They're gonna walk to the counter. They're gonna, a, a planner will enter information and let them know, good news, you don't have to do a traffic study. Or hey, guess what? You're gonna have to do a traffic study. But that, that, they're gonna get that answer at the counter rather than that getting routed to me, then routed back and then phone back to the developer. So it's a more concise uh, report that, that staff is gonna present somebody at the counter, which is really the goal that I keep hearing, um, you know, city council, uh, talking about for many years. And I know that's the goal that Sherry and Alexa and Steve, we're all on the same page. We're trying to expedite this experience.
Thank you very much.
Does it have any? To the city?
Can you start over with that, sir?
Um, does it have any fiscal impact?
Oh, no, no fiscal impact. So um, as part of uh, the work we do at the city, we crafted the methodology. Um, we've, um, we, we did utilize a consultant that is currently working on a project in the city just to, to kind of vet some of the numbers that I'd come up with and to present some of the graphics. But it is a policy document and has no fiscal impact.
But do, uh, I suspect that we have to pay the consultants, are correct, or?
Yes, there was a nominal fee for the, for the consultant, um, peer review that I, that I brought them on board for.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
Alright, any, uh, any other question from, uh, a member that's city council before I open public hearing?
So uh, I have a question, just a real, a real quick question. So how much does it cost, uh, the developer to hire a, a traffic engineer um, that they normally would not hire, would not need to hire? Is it about ten thousand or less than ten thousand, since you remember?
That's a very good question. That's, that's an extremely very, very good question. So when dealing with the V M T analysis, one of the things that we did is we crafted uh, a methodology. And after we crafted the methodology, we presented it to our consultant and said, how long would it take you to run the study? Considering the rules I came up with. And the numbers that he gave me said, look, it would probably take about three days where the staff were probably no more than forty-five hundred dollars. Now, the, that's the good thing with the V M T analysis is that because you're pulling data and you're essentially providing a report, I think that dollar amount is going to be consistent throughout most of our typical projects. Obviously not, that won't be the case with the mall. It won't be the case with other grand projects. But projects that barely trigger a V M T, I think you're looking at about a five thousand dollar study. Uh, the same thing goes for um, a traffic impact analysis. I'll take a project like the Starbucks on Beach Boulevard when it moved across the street. That, that study, um, it, it really didn't warrant a traffic impact analysis. And that's one other thing I wanted to add. Just because the number's not met, and I think this is important to Serge because it was part of his question earlier, just because the, the, the trigger is not met of, let's say, the five hundred trips. If I feel that there is a benefit to the community to study a project because of its proximity to residential, because it's of a proximity to school, I can still trigger an analysis to be stood, uh, to be, um, to be done by, by a development, by a developer. So the T I process is for the, for the Starbucks would run you about ten thousand dollars, I think. But um, that's a very high traffic producing type of business. If you're looking at a, at a smaller um, development, they would fly under the seven fifty and not need a study at all.
I see. So in some cases, you're saying that it is uh, uh, subjective. It is your prerogative to decide whether they, you would request a study?
Correct. I think in, in all the years I've been here, I wanna say that the, the Starbucks study across the street was one that, that I felt passionate about, that I felt the community needed to see an analysis because of the, the rerouting that would take place and all of that. Um, and um, those are the instances. There's been very few instances where I've said, you must do it because I believe you need to. Usually we follow the metric. And again, by raising that threshold to seven fifty, most of your regular, you know, small businesses would not trigger that study. Your Starbucks will, your Seven Leaves Cafe, they will, you know, Habit Burger, those will definitely. And again, those are development projects on a grander scale that can afford that type of, of, of expense uh, early on in the process.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Alright, so any, any other question? If not, I'd like to open public hearing. Seakl?
Yes, I did not receive any ecomments for public hearing um, at this time. If anybody would like to speak on public hearing item, you can raise your hand.
Alright, I don't see any, uh, anyone. Okay, so uh, closed public hearing. Now may I have the council action?
I would like to move to.
Hold on, I, it's a mayor council comment, right? Uh, I, I've been waiting for the mayor council comment. So are we, are we having that one or no?
Yeah, we, uh, well.
I, I do, I, I do have the comments. I had a chance to um, to sit down with um, um, Adolfo and also um, the city manager. Uh, and um, I understand the, I, I have to say that uh, I have to commend for their, for the effort that Adolfo put in the work. Uh, when I talk about the, you know, the, the streaming, streamlined process and I heard that he said that this is one of them. And I think that it's going to help uh, the developers, to help the, the, the residents when they have the, when they turn into projects, especially for the small projects that, you know, if we can eliminate the process of the review and approval process going through the traffic um, committee. Uh, I will, I would say that it will help to speed, uh, to expedite the process. And at the same time, it will save the cost for the city as well as for the uh, developer or the residents of, who have the project turned in. So, you know, by talking to him, I understand that, you know, uh, it's a good process that he, he put in place and he will come up with the tools for the people who are um, at the counters, uh, you know, can access that and, and can make the determination right there whether we need to, to route it to uh, the traffic engineer or not. Then I think that's the, that's a great uh, idea. I would like to ask if Alexa or planning department can also do it the same as the other uh, departments. You know, this is, you know, this is what we get out of their um, traffic uh, engineering. Maybe we have another department, let's say, safety or uh, uh, um, you know, uh, other department that we have to, to, to have to go through. If we can streamline the process, which is, we can eliminate the unnecessary uh, steps, then I think it will expedite the, the, you know, the review and approval process, which in turn will help developers because I have so much complaining from, uh, from the resident that, you know, uh, the process is taking too long. And by introducing um, this method a, a, along with uh, others uh, departments.
Alright, so Adolfo, would you like to respond?
Well, I think.
So with that, I, uh, yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that this process is, is um, is really a joint effort between um, traffic engineering division and, and really the planners at the counter. So this effort could, would not be possible if it wasn't for the work that they do at the counter. So we, we are very appreciative that they're going to be assisting us in streamlining the process. I know this is working with Sherry on other, other um, methods and, and approaches to streamlining other, other uh, procedures within her department at the time.
Yeah, I appreciate for Sherry, uh, you know, when I, when I sat down with you guys, I, I, I know that she put her heart into that. And then, you know, trying to get every department to work on, on different, uh, you know, strategies so that we can eliminate the extra staff. So I, I appreciate for her, uh, you know, effort too. So with that, I, I, I move to approve that. Uh, first of all, adopt the traffic uh, impact analysis guidelines. And then we can uh, adopt a resolution for uh, the, for CEQA uh, resolution.
Vice Mayor? You, would you like to say anything? Vice Mayor?
No, I already said it. I, I was, no, that's fine.
So actually, so I actually have it that Vice Mayor Ho made the motion and so um, so Councilmember Ruin, you want a second her motion?
Okay, if that's the case, then I, I second the motion, but I was. Okay, if that's the case, then I, I second the motion, but I was thinking of, you know, waiting for different steps, so that we can go ahead and make the motion, but it doesn't matter to me. I can, I can go ahead for second.
Okay.
All right, so, call for the vote, please.
Yes, so, and this is to adopt the traffic impact analysis guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act for the City of Westminster, and direct staff to update the guidelines as needed, and adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, adopting the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Transportation Vehicle Miles Traveled VMT Analysis Thresholds for Purposes of Analyzing Transportation Impacts Under CEQA. So, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next, we have item five point one, adopt a resolution auto writings, the city managers apply for three hundred thousand in state local early action lending grant funds. Louder Brew?
I second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho, and that's to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Westminster, authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant program funds. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have item five point two, accept, turn up rent award from Department of Justice, of, of Justice Program in title. Bureau of Justice Assistance and Fiscal Year twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program fiscal year twenty nineteen. And second.
That motion made by Councilmember Do, seconded by Mayor Ta?
Is there more in route? Question, is there more funding in the pipeline? In support of our current issue in terms of COVID, you know, COVID gap? Good question.
I believe that this is a funding that our police department that we receive annually, right? Chief?
Good evening. Yes, this is a part of a grant that we applied for to help with funding, to help offset some of the costs. It also covers some part-time wages to help out here at the police department to facilitate our customers coming in, to make sure they're maintaining six-foot social distancing, cleaning the area, and to cover some things like masks and PPEs and things like that. To answer, the other question, is there more coming in? Absolutely, there's more coming in every day. We've been applying for other grants, this is just one that has made it through the system right now, is here for us to accept, for, for council to accept tonight, but there, there is more on the back end that we've applied for, and will be coming in shortly.
Chief, thank you for your leadership in identifying those dollars and being aggressive. You know, but we have not hesitated when it comes to those dollars. So, again, I want to thank you for, for all the hard work you and your team have been doing to take, take that opportunity for behalf of our residents.
Oh, you're very, very welcome.
Yeah, we love it when money comes in.
Second.
So, please look for some more.
We're, we're looking every day.
Thank you.
Okay, so, motion on the floor right now, and that's to accept the Bureau of Justice Assistance fiscal year twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program grant award from the Department of Justice Office Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and amend the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty adopted budget by designating grant revenues in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars, and increasing budget expenditures of the CESF grant account in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars toward part-time wages, personal protection equipment, and supplies. So, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next, item five point three, adoption of a side letter agreement between the City of Westminster and Westminster Police Officer Association, and adoption of a resolution providing for compensation plan for management, administrative, and confidential employee of the City of Westminster effective July first, twenty twenty, true and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the second floor?
Yes, and that's to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending resolution number four eight nine two to extend the terms of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Police Officers Association for a period of one year, July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Adopt a resolution, entitled a resolution of the mayor.
Twenty twenty-one.
Oh, sorry, twenty twenty-one. Sorry about that. And adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending resolution number four eight six two, the compensation plan for administrative management and confidential employees, extending the compensation plan for a period of one year, July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and adding the classification of city clerk slash communications director. Motion made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Do. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I just want to, first, before I vote, I want to be clear, from my understanding, the, the officers are going to waive a wage increase, and they're investing in our community. I mean, here's another example of the partnership we have, the police department, understand our situation, and is willing to make that sacrifice. I want to, again, I don't want to be taken lightly. I think people should know exactly what it is that we're voting for. This resolution includes an extension of the contract, but a waive in step and column increase, or, or salary increase in terms of cost of living. So, I want to thank the police department and the Westminster Police Office Association for their commitment to helping the state whole in this difficult time. So, with that, I say, I.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Item six point one, notice and call up general municipal election on November the twenty twenty.
I move to approve.
Second.
Made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, calling for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty, for the election of state officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law. Adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Orange to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty, with the statewide general election to be held on the date pursuant to section one zero four zero three of the Elections Code, and adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at an election to be held Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next, we have a common and request for general items from city council agency members, including AB one, two, three, four, report when required. Vice Mayor Ho?
I would like to agendize, I'd like to ask staff if we could identify, if you could help identify source of money or services that we could use to help small businesses, you know, in our community, and every, every community suffering. So, I'd like to see if we could identify more money, more services, any, anywhere, federal funds, grant, anything. I think at this time, I mean, I'm getting a lot of calls, and the only thing I know of, the only program, is that one point one million that we talked about, and we set aside, and I think we are, I think on the twenty ninth, if I'm not wrong, that you're going to open the portal for people to apply. If, if staff could confirm that as well. So, that's what I want to put on the agenda. And I'd like to, I don't know if I could put it on the same agenda. I'd like to see if we could, well, no, I think that, that should. So, if we could vote on that. I'll split it up.
So, I, second request? Is that one or two? I forgot.
There's one, and then I'll say the other separately.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that one more time, what that item is?
I would, I would, I would like to see if staff could help identify some more money, or services, or any help that we could get for our small businesses who are really in need for help at this time.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so that was requested by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta. The Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras? Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. And secondly, the money that we talked about, the one point one, I know that the portal is going to open on, if you could confirm, the twenty ninth, which is this coming Monday, is that correct? And
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, what I'd like to ask is if we could agendize and see if we could change that to a lottery system. I think it, it would be fairer, because I think if we're, if it's only a million dollars, and about twenty thousand each, so that we can only serve about maybe fifty to seventy-five small businesses. And so, just wondering if we could agendize that to see if we could vote and help, you know, and, and change that to a lottery system, just like the rental system program?
City Attorney? Can you respond, please?
Well, certainly, you could agendize this if you agree to do so. The, what was the timeframe for opening or starting the applications? It's relatively soon from my recollection.
Monday.
This Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Well, since we haven't received applications, we could put out a change, and probably extend the date to start receiving applications maybe a li- a little bit later, just so people can, I, I think what would be helpful, given the shortness of time, and given COVID, and the need to get money out to businesses, you might want to actually walk this item on as an urgency item, if you want to make that change. That way, staff would know, yeah, so staff would know to make that change, start pursuing it now.
Okay.
We may, it may require extending the application deadline out a little bit to allow for that change. Alexa, do you have any comments on this?
I don't think we would need to extend the application portion of it. It would just be handled differently on the back end, so.
Okay, so, given the shortness of time, I would guess I would recommend that you, you would walk this item on, because it is rather urgent. So, would there be a motion then? Go, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to walk this item on, and to change that to a lottery system with respect to the one million, one point one, to be exact, that's being allocated to the small businesses, and to be administered through the SBDC.
Okay, so there's a motion to walk it, first to walk it on, and then.
I think we need to walk it on first, then we, and then.
Yes.
Okay.
So, is there a second?
Okay, so, I second, or anyone else? Okay, so I second that we have walked on item.
All right, so this is going to be entered into the record as urgency item number five point five, and it's to walk on an item to change the one point one million dollar to a lottery system. Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Just for clarification, these are still loans, correct? We're not making this a grant.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so I.
And right now, right now, all we're doing is voting to walk the item on, not to change anything just yet.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Do?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero to walk on this item as urgency item five point five.
Vice Mayor Ho, so now we're allowed to discuss the item.
Thank you. Okay, so it's regarding, I don't know the title of that, but it's regarding the one point one million dollars set aside as a loan to small businesses at two point, I'm sorry, interest of two percent. Every, all the terms still remain the same. We just want to change that to a lottery system, just like the rental assistance program, because I feel that it's more, more fair, and I think, of course, everybody has to qualify, whatever qualification process, we're not really changing that, but we're just asking change to a lottery system.
Second, I think that's a fair process.
Question for you, Alexa. I know that you've been advertised out there, saying that first come, first served. How much change that you have to do in order to notify, you know, whoever you notify, or whatever document that you put out there already, that you have to modify to make sure that people understand this is a change now?
It, it probably shouldn't be that, that difficult. You know, we'll update everything on our websites and share it on our social media. We'll certainly make sure that the SBDC is updating everything that they've got on their website, and just, yeah, try to continue to communicate with people, and certainly, when we open the portal on Monday, that will, you know, everyone will have to go to a place to get that application, so we can make sure that it's very clearly marked there.
I understand that you also have a meeting with the people, right, and talk about it, did anybody show up on that day?
There were webinars that were held, yes. I'm, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but about thirty people showed up on the Friday webinar, I think about fifteen on Monday, and I think only two were on the Tuesday webinar, so.
How did you, how did you inform them? Did you inform them first come, first served, or?
Yes.
Okay, so you have to go back and notify them too?
Yeah, there, there's notification system for anyone that attended a webinar.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, mayor, if we could also get public comment on this one item, since it was added to the agenda at some point, before we take a vote?
I would also just suggest that if, if we're going to handle it this way, we also have a, we need to set a closing date, would be my recommendation. Whatever time period, you kind of want to keep that window open, because at some point, we'll need to close it in order to do the lottery.
So, what is the original closing date?
What do you recommend, Alexa?
Okay, can just, before you make that, answer that question, I just want to remind everyone that this is, you know, people need funding now. The longer we delay the window, the longer it's going to take for our business owners to receive those dollars. So, whatever number we come up with, I want to make sure that it's not too far from now, because they need the money now.
Yeah, well, on that same subject, I have a question for attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question to you is, um, you know, because of all these requirements set forth by the SBDC, such as, you know, I know they just kind of like copy and paste all the requirements that they normally would require you when you go through, get an SBD, SBA loan, including such as the business plan. So, I think that's quite ridiculous that we require a business plan. In general, when you get an SBA loan, you're, you're really out to, you know, expand your business. And you, so you want to expand, and you, you want to have a plan, so I get that. This is not an expansion plan, but it's, you know, it's basically to help with COVID. Plan, but it's, you know, it's basically to help with uh, COVID-related setbacks, you know? So, I have a lot of uh, small business, small business uh, owners calling me, asking like. They're gonna have to spend two, three thousand dollars to get a business plan. So, I said, well, you know, I, you could simply write up something and then as I was thinking about it, I said, you know, what are they gonna say? So this is to help them with the expenses for COVID. And um, you know, so. As, as long as they spend within the lines, why do they have to come up with that? So I'd like to change that, I want us to go about, how do we go about changing that, so we don't require a business plan?
Well, it is city funds, so I would think we could change that. Again, I'll defer to Alexa if there's something that would be restrictive as far as SBA is concerned, but. Generally speaking, it's city fund, so we should be able to set parameters. But I would be more concerned if they had already submitted application. At this point, I don't believe they have. So we, so we do have a chance to maybe change that process. Um, as long as we let everybody know and give them sufficient time. So um, Alexa, is there anything that would restrict us changing those parameters?
Uh, no, there's nothing that would restrict us, it's our money. Um, the, I mean, the purpose of the business plan, just like other documentation, was. To show that there is, um, that there's some sort of vision for the future, that there is um, a good chance. That the loan will be repaid. And the SBDC does intend to work with each individual business. Including providing them a template for that business plan and walking them through those steps. So that's part of the service that the SBDC provides is. Kind of this handholding for these businesses to, um, with the idea of making them successful, to help them get through. You know, this, this pandemic and into recovery, so that's, um, businesses don't have to do it on their own. So it's, but it's certainly up to.
You want to make that optional, because a lot of people are having a hard time. Coming up with a, a business plan. They're actually shying away from the loan because of that. And if that's our intention, then we keep it on there, but I really don't, I mean, I, I, and it's, sure, I mean, there are a lot of ways you could find out. Somebody has the capability of, of um, paying back a loan, right? So you look at their FICO score, you look at their, how long they've been in business, et cetera, et cetera. But to have a, that a business plan is a plan, to me, it is a plan where you're gonna look into the future, you're asking the. Business owner, look into the future and tell me what you're gonna do with this money to expand your business. So it's, it's like, okay, I think you should change that to like, how are you gonna use this money? Uh, you know, to, to help you get out of this setback of uh, you know, to get you back on your feet. So that I go for, but not a business plan, the way the business plan's intended.
Well, you know, I, I brought up that issue when we voted for this um, a couple more weeks ago. Uh, most peo- most businesses in uh, in Little Saigon, people have. Very difficult time to come up with a business plan, and I recommend that we, the city partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And have and work with them to help the business uh, owners to come up with a business plan. This is a plan is part of a quality certification to, uh, as required. By the um. By the, you know, so that we can establish the uh, the uh, ability for. People to pay back the loan. So, you know, do away with it, I'm sure it's, 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 it's gonna be a violation, uh, is that right, Alexa?
No, like, as she said, I think this is our money, we, we make the parameters. I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think our Chamber of Commerce is, is, is.
Doesn't have to be a Chamber of Commerce, it's uh, we, you know, our, the business owner in this community need help. And we need to, uh, we need to uh, establish a, a partnership with somebody to help the business owner, that's what I'm saying.
Alexa, I have a question, so is the business plan must. In a process or that could be an optional?
Right now, it's a requirement, um, it's one of the submittal requirements, but as I said, the SBDC will. Be that partner that helps those businesses create that plan if they don't already have one.
So basically.
Again, it's your, it's your, it's your money, so if you want to change.
Right, right, so if we don't have.
No, it's not our money, it's the city's money.
Yeah, because they need a, like a city funding, so we uh, have uh, more option in the process, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, is there a possibility that? We can leave this item to Alexa to discuss with the Small Business Administration of what that might look like? Maybe a modification of that plan? I mean, I do think there needs to be some sort of accountability and a plan for, for paying those dollars back to the city, I mean, this is a, this is a grant. Uh, a loan, and so we, again, we want to also help our businesses at the same time. You know, plan for the future and hopefully remain stable in our community. I think a small, a, a, a business plan or a form of a business plan. Would be essential for their future and ours to ensure on our investment. So Alexa, is there, could you have a conversation with this Small Business Association Administration and see what that might look like? I mean, I would hate to throw that out the window. I think that this program is essential and these are city dollars. And so I think, I want to make sure that we're also doing our due diligence as trustees. To ensure that our investment will be returned, but we also understand the value that businesses have in these dollars, so. You know, Alexa, again, is there any possibility you can have that conversation before completely throw it out the window?
I, I, I'd like to ask. Alexa. I'd like to ask that uh, with your web- webinar uh, with uh, over like forty people, right?
Yes.
You have to explain the process, you probably have to go over the, the requirements. Did you have a chance to go over with them about this? Did, did you have any feedback or did you have any concern? That they said, oh, I, I will have a problem with coming up with the business plan or something like that?
So just for clarification, the SBDC did lead the webinars, I did attend all of them, but. I don't recall there being any questions of anyone saying that they couldn't meet a requirement. And, and the SBDC um, reiterated on all of the webinars that they were there to help through the process, so I, I. That may have allayed the fears for people that were able to attend, I'm, I don't know.
Okay.
So against one, we're talking about citywide programs, it's not tailored for one business in general, so if one business is having a challenge of coming up with a business plan. I mean, there's gonna get the support from the Small Business Administration. Again, I understand where uh, Vice Mayor Ho is going, we want to make it a streamlined process. But again, I think we should be really mindful that this is not our money, this is the city's money, taxpayers' dollars. We want to be, we want to be fiscally responsible.
Yeah.
And ensure that our investment is protected and we get those dollars back to the city, and I think a business plan is a small price to pay. For, and you're gonna receive the support from the Small Business Administration to get support, you know, twenty thousand dollars is, is, is might not be a lot of money to you, but it is. To them in our, in our city, especially now in this time of need, so. Again, I, 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 I see where you're going, I'm supporting the process of turning this into a lottery process, but to. Throw out the business plan simply because one or two businesses mentioned it, I, I've never heard that comment, it's the first time I've heard it tonight. And again, they're not going at it alone, the Small Business Administration is gonna be there, support them. I don't see a problem with it, and I, I think we could, we need, we need again, be mindful, this is not our money, this is the taxpayers' money. We want to make sure there's a plan to get that money back into our city coffers.
Thank you. Well, you know what, I, it is not one person, it's not one small business, I actually deal with a lot of small businesses. And let me say, um, a lot of people drop out because they said, you know, that's just a lot of requirements and just, you know, I'm not going to. You know, pay two, three thousand dollars to have a, a, a business plan drawn up. And so that's kind of when I pay attention to the small, to the business plan. But like I said, I think we, y- y- you know, keeping it on there for the purpose of making sure the dollars go to. Uh, you know, to the right reason, for the right purpose, I, I, I get that. But like I said, a business plan is a plan to expand, so perhaps you want to. Change that to, okay, how do you want to use this, this money to help get through this uh. You know, COVID nineteen time, it's not a business plan, it shouldn't be called business plan. I, I believe that the SBDC, you know, very early on, it just cut and paste, which I, I think that's really. Number one, I think that's a lazy man's approach, okay? When you copy and paste and you say, hey, this is the, this is what, the, the list is what I'm used to dealing with. But like I said, this is COVID time, this is, this is the money to help these people through, you know, their setbacks due to COVID nineteen. It is not the time for them to go through the traditional business plan to expand their business, so that's why I'm saying.
Expansion, but there should be a business plan. Maybe, maybe it was specific and say there's no, no, no business plan included.
I, I have a lot of people who are not applying because of that, and one person, I had to, I really felt bad for her, so I said. Okay, I will help you with your business plan.
Alright, so I, this uh, so I think that I re, uh, uh. With Vice Mayor Ho, I think that we should, I think we need to revise. Uh, instead of asking the people to submit a business plan, we, I think we have to ask them that. How can they uh, utilize the loan in uh, keeping the business?
I go for that.
Yes.
If there's anybody that's been.
Councilmember Doe?
But, you know, you, you're right, business plan is basically, you know, the showing the ability for you to span and survive. Um, and that's the purpose of the loan, the loan is, are you, are you, is a, uh, the, uh, business. Owner gonna be able to survive and return the loan? If you want to give the money away, then yeah, I totally understand that, but, um, but you know, just again. Majority of the city council can, can go either way, but if we, if we can. Direct staff to partnership with people in the community. And uh, come up with a group of people who willing to spend their time, volunteer their time to help these businesses. Owner who uh, who uh, need help with the, come up with a business plan, it's not difficult to come up with a business plan. Then, then, then we doing our job, and at the same time, we protect the interests of the city. And we can help the community, instead of uh, making so easy to the point that there's no. Um, which is, which is a disservice uh, for our city. Uh, we, we have direct staff and have staff uh, partnership with people that can. Willing to volunteer their time to help the um, business owner who, who need, need help. Uh, you know, w- we already knew that, this is not, this is, it's not a surprise.
Yeah, so if you're. Well, you know, the terminology, business plan, okay? In business, that's what it means, is this is for, it would be for expansion. So, if you, you know, what are you gonna do with that money and, and how are you gonna use it and to expand your business? So this is not, so perhaps we want to clarify that, hey, simply, what are you using it for? What are you using, so I think, just, just keep it really simple like that, what are you using it for? And so if you see some legitimacy in its use, then I think, you know, then, then the SBDC could. You know, decide, go from there, but I'm just saying, don't use the terminology of business plan, okay? When they go to their CPA, when they go to, you know, I mean, I get calls from their CPA going, you know how much a business plan is? Don't use that terminology is what I'm saying, you know? Simply identify what you're using the, the money for.
Can I, can I? Um, I, I totally understand, okay, but, but again, whatever it is, you, you call it, whatever name you put on that so-called business plan. Would that be ground for decline? Um, because uh, there, you know, whoever looked at that, it's a, that particular document, they can say, hey, you know what? This, this business uh, have no future and we're gonna decline. Is that a possibility, um, Alexa? Or just business plan, we, all we have to have is just a business plan, it doesn't matter what the content.
Other, the other prerequisites, maybe, maybe, again, I just want to clarify, I'm not against what you're saying, Mayor Vice Mayor, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Terminology, is there other, other? What you call it, uh, measures in there that to make sure that this is, you know, that this, this business is sound and be able to, to move forward? Besides a business plan, or maybe it's called something else?
Identify what is the use of, for, for this money, and then the person, whoever receives the application at the other end at the SBDC could. Could make a decision on whether this person qualifies or not, but when you use the terminology, business plan, you know, out there in the business world. That's what it means, what I just told you. So again, I'm saying that, you know what, perhaps I need to have a talk with the SBDC. We, we cannot sit here and make a decision when, when, uh, like I said, you know, the, the term, the terminology, business plan is used. And it's understood by the business, by business people as a whole, is the way I just told you. And so we can't, if we're gonna identify it and say, okay, we want to see what this money is being used for, and then. From that, we could make an assessment of whether this business is going to survive or not, then let's write that.
I, I agree, so what other? I still haven't heard from Alexa yet. What other qualifications besides a business plan are required?
There is a use of funds state that's required, which would be where you state, you know, how you intend to use the money, that is a part of it. Um, when, they will run a credit check, um, two years worth of tax returns, profit and loss statements. And then kind of a year-over-year comparison, and part of that is just to show the impact of COVID nineteen, because the idea is that we're, you know. Uh, mitigating impacts here, so yes, there will be a number of supporting documentation.
Okay.
Yes. Of like at least fifteen items, because I, I know, I, I.
I make an exception for this particular item, what about if people keep coming back to you, uh, to us? And complain that, you know what, I have, I have, don't have a good credit, are we gonna waive that too, or, or we continue going down?
Uh, credit, we're talking about just business plan, and if we could identify and specify clearly what it is, is all I'm saying, okay?
Can I talk?
Let's not, let's, let's not go wild.
I've been, I, I've been waiting for, for this, okay, let me, I heard both sides of arguments. What I, what I see is, let's go back to our purpose from beginning, we want to uh, you know, to help the business. Uh, to come back when we reopen. And that's one of the, the, the goal that we want to do, and, and at the same time, I just heard. Uh, from Alexa that the intent, what are you intent to do with this money? The intent to do with this money is different from the business plan. Business plan, I think is more, uh, do, require more uh, development into it compared to the intent uh, of using it. The second thing is, I heard from, uh, the Vice Mayor said that, you know, many people been talking to her and shy away of, of, of this. Uh, you know, trying to get the, uh, help from, from us, and this is our city money. And I, you know, I kind of concerned that if, we don't want anybody shy away, if they do have the need. Uh, you know, then, then they should be able to, uh, to apply for it, and you know, the intent. Uh, like uh, Castle, uh, Councilman uh, Sir Contreras said, you know, if you have another measure, the measure that we, uh, that Alexa just said. That the intent to use this money, I think that that's clarified.
Alright, uh, before, I think before we want to continue or. Castle come up with any action, I'd like to ask our city clerk that, do we have any member from the public? They would like to speak, because we, this is an urgent item, so we need to invite member from the public.
Yes, I have one speaker, Terry Rains currently.
Please.
Hi Terry, you with us?
Hello, Terry Rains, Westminster, you hear me? Yes. Um, listen, there's something called a business recovery plan. And while all these businesses maybe aren't like in failure right now. I don't think it's over the top to ask these people to do a variation of a business plan at all.
Yeah, actually.
Comments, this is oral comments.
Yeah.
Attorney, please?
Please proceed.
Alright, so anyway, so there is such thing as a business recovery plan or something similar. The other thing is that when uh, Vice Mayor Ho was asking about other assistance for small businesses. Um, you know, you might speak to the District One County Supervisor. Who chose to not give his share of the seventy-five million to city governments directly. So they could administer it to uh, cities as they saw fit, or their uh, businesses as they saw fit. He is one of three city uh, board supervisors that's sitting on that money, doing the same thing that you guys are doing here tonight. Talking about it, coming up with ideas, changing it, all that, in the meantime, businesses are in dire need now. And you can sit there and talk about it all night long, you can make a lot of changes, but Sergio brought up a point, you know, we need. To get the money to them now. to get the money to them now. The, I'm quite sure that the SBDC has dealt with many more loans like this than any of us have. And they're well-versed in the field, they're dealing with a lot of COVID, uh, loan administration right now. Um, they know the variety of small businesses out there. And I, they've already offered per Alexa, uh, to assist each, you know, business, kinda tailor whatever is needed to that business. I do not say, make an exception to the criteria, but the interpretation of that criteria by the SBDC could very well do what I think Vice Mayor Ho is asking to do. But I don't wanna put the word out there that, oh, it's too much trouble for me to do this, so I'm not gonna apply. Well, you know what, then don't apply. Because this is part of being a business, this is a responsibility of having a small business. You don't have to have a forty-page or a hundred-page small business plan. You can do it in like six easy steps. And especially if it's a recovery plan, there are templates out there that can help you do it, probably in all languages, cause I know that's a concern. But I just, um,
Yeah.
I, I just think that, you know, we're only getting two percent on this money. We're putting a million dollars, over a million dollars of our money out there, when again, there's money sitting there with Andrew Doe that should be targeted to our city. And we need, it's our money, as was stated, it is not your money, it is the taxpayers' money. And I wanna see some sort of guarantee that these businesses are taken seriously, this money that we are at a time when we can't afford extra money. I wanna see that these businesses are taken seriously and, and, and saying they're very appreciative of this opportunity. You don't have to spend thousands of dollars to do a business plan for this purpose. You can do it, like I said, with very simple assistance, I'm sure that the SBC DC will help them. Um, there also needs to be, if you're gonna change this to a lottery system, um, as Alexa, I think, pointed out, is you need to have an open, just like we did with the rental application, you need to have an opening and a closing date period. And then if there's money left after that is all processed and the people that have qualified, then you can reopen the period up. But you can't do a lottery on an open-ended, uh, application period. So you, you're gonna need, and, and again, the more you talk about this and the more you try to change something that is working in many cities already using the same administrator, the longer it's gonna be before those businesses get help and the longer, the more apt it is that those businesses are gonna fail. And when they fail, we fail because we lose the sales tax money, we lose the property tax money. So I think we need to refocus on getting it done, we need to focus on, um, going to our district supervisor and putting pressure on there to get that money out to the cities. He's chosen not to do it, he's chosen to make it a county application, which means you think this process is complicated for the small businesses here? If they have to go through the county administer plan that Andrew Doe, uh, you know, with, uh, I'm sorry, am I over time?
One minute left.
Okay, um, anyway, if, if they have to go through that, I can guarantee you, it will be much more complicated. So again, there's other ways to handle this, um, get a closing date, call it, have the, the SBDC call it, you know, a small business recovery loan, or, you know, in addition to stating how they'll use the money, but also, um, you know, they have to have some kind of plan of, you know, are they gonna keep all their employees? Are they, I mean, they just need to do that. So yes, I see both sides, but I think we're, we're getting caught up in details right now. And, um, anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Uh, city club. Do we have any other speaker?
I have no other speakers.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Ho.
Okay, so I mean, I love that terminology, business recovery plan. I think that is very descriptive and it is basically all the same as what I was saying. So I think that putting that word in there will be very descriptive is, you know, uh, of what we think we are, uh, they should be focusing on, which is a recovery plan. And, uh, yes, definitely, we need to decide on a closing, um, date of that loan. So I don't know if we are gonna go through that and decide, uh, and I will let Alexa, um, uh, figure that part out, and when are we going to, or, um, what date, um, you are proposing as a closing date of the loan? Um, and you know what, if it's, uh, I think if we make it a recovery plan, I don't, I think people will not misunderstand it as some, you know, uh, very expensive, uh, plan that they have to hire someone to write. So I will go for that. I, I think we should insert the recovery, the word recovery, uh, in there.
All right, second.
So if I could clarify, um, I see three things here potentially, just to clarify if I'm incorrect, but to basically change the terminology from a business plan to a small business recovery plan, and that the application just reflect that kind of uh, plan that it, that, how, how they're going to recover and be sustained during this time. Two, you're gonna change, uh, the, the system to a lottery. And three, you, the council would be granting to Alexa the ability to set an opening and closing date, whatever works best. If, if that is what the council want.
Did we want, did we want to change the opening date? No, you don't need to change, right? Okay with that, right? Okay, so let's keep the opening, cause the, they need the money ASAP, let's keep it on the twenty-ninth. But then you decide at your discretion, what is the closing date? So a couple weeks, or you wanna decide now, or you want us to vote on it?
Not much longer.
I would give her discretion to do whatever worked best.
Okay, fine, I'll go with that.
All right, we have the motion by Vice Mayor Ho and second by Councilmember Wayne.
And Terrence.
You know.
Oh.
Yes.
iPad, uh, ran out of battery, so it gets shut off, uh, for the last couple of minutes, so I didn't really hear uh, about all that, uh, motion and all the steps.
Can you repeat your?
Yes, I can, I could definitely recap that. So, yes, so it was motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Councilmember Charis, and that's to change the term business plan to recovery plan. Change the system to a lottery and to grant staff the ability to change the end date.
Recovery plan, and what was the other one?
Change the, um, the system of, of granting the loan, uh, to a lottery.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Vice Mayor Ho, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor Ta. Um, again, I, I know that was a spirited conversation, but I think that a lot of times we agree more than we disagree, it's just a matter, matter of language and the words that we're using sometimes, so I, 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 I get where, uh, Vice Mayor Ho was coming, and I think business recovery plan is a great way to reword that. Um, to help, again, move this along, we just, we, we gotta make it a simple process, easy to understand and get that money into the hands of our businesses we need the most. I, I, I've gotten calls as well, people waiting for their opportunity. And I also think the lottery system is a fair process. I think sometimes information takes a little longer to get to parts of our community, and I think the lottery system kind of in a way evens the field, cause it's a drawing and, and, and this makes it a little fair. So again, thank you for that. Um, I have, uh, one item that I'd like to place on the agenda for the next council meeting. Um, as you know, um, we're currently, uh, working on our census, it's underway. And it's really important because getting an accurate number has, has a significant effect on the fund you receive from the federal government and, and how many representatives we have in Congress, how much money we receive for our senior services. And, um, I, you know, a number of, a number of funding opportunities. It's also really important because it helps us know who are, who we are representing in our various districts as, as, and will probably affect the boundaries of those districts. You can then men, then, uh, act also mentioned that, you know, people, again, the governor has recognized the importance of that, that, that process and adopted AB fifteen sixty-three late last year, that is law, in effect, that has, uh, is adopted, which helps, it's sort of, it's called the Census Bill of Rights, which helps and let people know about their rights and, uh, what they are and when it comes to the census. You know, number one, people have rights to participate in the census, free of threat and intimidation. Two, people have the right to confidentiality in their information. Uh, three, people have the right to respond to census in various ways, whether it works best for them, whether it's electronic or by phone or on paper. Four, people have the right to request language assistance so they can understand and answer the questions. And, um, five, people have the right to verify identity of any person who says they are a census worker. Uh, you don't need to answer any of the questions unless they, they first verify their identity. And finally, the new law made it a crime if someone falsely represents who they are and this, as a census taker for any, uh, negative purposes. So I like to, uh, like, uh, uh, us as a council to place that item on the agenda to, to pass a resolution on the next agenda that affirms our support for the new Census Bill of Rights. And we should also adopt the Census Bill of Rights of our, on our website. And I want to be sure that residents in our city are aware of these rights so that everyone can participate in the census and everyone is counted, free from any intimidation or threat. And I don't know if you read the stories in the paper or seen, there's been, you know, people pretending they're census workers and putting up false information, uh, uh, in neighborhoods to intimidate people from participating in the census. And I think we in Westminster understand the importance of counting all our residents, regardless of, of their background or socioeconomic status, and we wanna make sure that everyone is counted. And so again, I like to place on the agenda, uh, resolution again, in support of, of Census Bill of Rights and then also place that information on our website.
Well, I, I'd like to honor that request.
Um, yeah, okay.
Right.
City Club.
Yes, that was a request made by Councilmember Contreras, um, to add an item regarding, uh, passing a resolution to affirm the Census Bill of Rights and placing the bill rights on the website, seconded by, uh, Mayor Ta. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Noen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
And lastly, I wanna, um, remind everyone that we are in full swing of summer and mosquito season. Be sure that you, to tip and toss any still water you have laying around your backyard, front yard. Mosquitoes are out in full force, they are out in the daytime and at night. They are not in any way discriminatory in terms of times of day. So I, I have kids and they have their share of mosquito bites throughout the entire day, cause they're in their backyard doing their thing. You know, I've called from neighbors concerned about mosquito infestation, but really it's about doing our part and making sure that we're tipping and tossing any still water in our plants and cups and, um, bottle caps, you know, and, and our can collection. You know, again, anything we can tip that still water and prevent it from becoming a breeding ground for mosquitoes will be most helpful, not only to you and your family, but also our residents and neighbors. So that said, that'd be all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Contreras. Next, uh, Councilmember Doe.
Thank you, Mayor, um. First of all, I just, uh, apologize that I missed a lot, due to, uh, work schedule, comp, uh, complex in the work schedule. I was not be able to attend a, um, yeah, open session, uh, council meeting, um. First and foremost, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the, uh, Westminster Police Department, uh, specially Chief on the back, uh, for your leaderships and, uh, to, uh, to work, um, maintain, eastern order, to support the residents, uh, uh, to have a peaceful protest accommodate them in any way possible. And, um, also thanks the neighborhood, uh, neighboring police department who, uh, participate in which way to help us out at, in our city. Uh, thank you very much, I really appreciate. Um, I also take the opportunity to thank the citizen, um, who participate full process in our city. Uh, we are very fortunate, um, that we have, uh, nothing but peaceful protests and there's no, there are no may, there are no instant, uh, there doesn't any unfortunate thing to happen in our city, so thank you very much. Um, also that we'd like to take this opportunity to let the, uh, the businesses in, in our city know that there we, the cities have a temporary outside seating, uh, permit uh, for restaurant due to, and you know, um, social distancing that, uh, um, restaurant in particular, who can, they can, uh, um, business owner can, uh, apply, reach out to the city and apply for a, a temporary, um, permit to have, uh, uh, table, uh, dining area outside of their, uh, um, facility. I'd like to remind everyone, uh, in our, the resident, um, um, in our city to, uh, to make sure that you, uh, wear masks and practicing, uh, social distancing, uh, when you are in public. And, uh, lastly, I'd like to thank, uh, staff, uh, the city staff, like, once again, uh, continues, uh, persevering, um, taking care of business during this pandemic and, uh, very for your leaderships. Um, and thank you for your, uh, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe. Yes.
Um, do you think after, who's next? Do you think I could go last? I just wanna ask, uh, staff something before we end.
Okay, I guess that my turn then, my turn then.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank, uh, this interim city manager, uh, Sherri Johnson. Uh, she, over the last several months, she did a lot of job, I have a chance to talk to her a lot. Um, and she helped, um, streamline the process. And I have to say that also, um, the Alexa and her team also worked very hard. I have a chance to met with, to meet with them at least four times already, uh, including the, uh, the building department to streamline, to work on, uh, and streamline the process. And, um, you know, we, we are not getting there yet, but at least, you know, at some point, we, uh, we will get there. But I see the improvement, uh, on that, and we continue to help meeting, uh, over, uh, the process. And again, I commend, uh, Alexa and her team for working really hard and willing to meet with the, with me and, 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 and go over, um, the process. Um, second thing is, I would like to ask our police chief, um, I know that there are, um, there are, uh, reports, uh, filed uh, in the different business complex, but, uh, you know, for the business complex in, uh, in Westminster, uh, and, uh, corner of Westminster and Edward, um, where also my business there. It's not because it's my business I bring, bring this one up, but I know that people make report, uh, to file report. Uh, over the last two or three weeks, there are tries, uh, there are uh, two times that they, they came in and they, uh, they, uh, messed up the lock up every unit, uh, business unit in there for the whole complex. And it's costly to, to replace the, the, the lock. But I, I, you know, I keep quiet about it because people, uh, you know, also keep quiet about it for the first time. But the second time, uh, it happened right, you know, uh, a week or, 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 or a week, uh, time frame. Then we need to take this action somehow. So if, I don't know whether it's a request or you already did that, or, or, you know, we probably need to have some kind of, um, uh, you know, uh, routing or, uh, the patrol, patrol, uh, the area more, uh, to prevent this guy happening. Or what, what are you planning to do with the police report that they already filed? Uh, I don't know that you have the, the, the answer for me right now, but you know, it's just a, a open request.
Sure, why don't, um, this is actually the first I'm hearing about it, but if you wanna give me a call tomorrow, uh, we can discuss it and then I'll have the Detective Bureau look into it and see what I can come up with and, uh, maybe we can set up a meeting with you and some of the business owners and, uh, try and approach this proactively and figure out what's going on and put a stop to it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayne and Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes, I'm, um, Ms. Sherri, Sherri Johnson, our interim city Yes, I'm um, Ms. Sherri Johnson, our interim city manager. Um, I know um the speaker earlier brought up, uh, are you here?
I am here.
Hi. Brought up Supervisor Andrew Doe's money, and I know I saw something uh on your report uh recently, at least for the last week. Could you give us an update on that?
Yes, I can, uh so yes, Supervisor Doe was allocated fifteen million dollars to uh to spend in his uh district. And of that fifteen million, he allocated two million to go directly to cities, so of that two million, we received, actually, just received it today in our bank account, uh three hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred, and we can spend that at council's discretion in an economic manner. And so I, um, if you would like, I can bring that uh as an agenda item next time and to discuss, and and you can, again, there's some additional money that we can use for small businesses.
Great, thank you very much, that's good news, great news, thank you.
Anything else, or Vice Mayor Ho?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, so I wanna thanks all our member of City Council. Although we have long meeting, but I think that it really helpful, I think that our council member that uh really work together, and I appreciate that. And I want to thank our city staff, our police officer for working really hard. Uh, we already opened our city, and I understand that, you know, that require a lot of challenge, but our city staff, they really, really patient, and they uh provide really quality and good services. I receive a lot of really good feedback from member of the public, and I, I feel really thankful for it. And last but not least, I want to wish everyone uh safe and happy for July, and uh I'd like to adjourn the meeting on Wednesday, on Friday, June twenty-sixth at eight AM, we're going to have a closed section, meeting adjourned.